Good evening and welcome to the March tenth, two thousand fifteen, school committee meeting. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Public Access Cable. The school committee would like to recognize and thank Tim Riley for taping tonight's production. East Hampton Public Access Cable Station Channels five, nineteen, and twenty is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at four one three, two zero three, one three six zero. Superintendent Follinsby, do you have some announcements for us?
Yes, the school committee will hold a public hearing on the proposed FY two thousand sixteen budget on Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, at six thirty P.M. The next school committee meetings are April fourteenth, and twenty-eighth, and June ninth, and twenty-third, two thousand fifteen. And we need to set the time for the next meeting. I have a note about that, so we'll do that. The Special Education Parent Advisory Council will meet on the following dates in the conference room on the second floor at fifty Payson Avenue: March eleventh, April eighth, May thirteenth, and June tenth. There are half-days of school on Thursday and Friday, March nineteenth and twentieth, due to parent-teacher conferences. There's a half-day of school on Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, due to Teacher Professional Development Day. There is no school on Friday, April third, due to Good Friday. There's no school April twentieth through twenty-fourth, due to Patriots' Day and Spring Break. There's a half-day of school on Friday, May first, due to Teacher Professional Development Day. There's no school on Monday, May twenty-fifth, due to Memorial Day, and at this time, the last day of school, and let's hope this holds, is scheduled for Wednesday, June twenty-fourth.
Thank you very much.
And can we just clarify, and that is still with the April vacation? Yes. We're still okay.
All right, so we need to set a date for our next meeting, or a time for our next meeting? Is, does anyone want to make a suggestion?
Six thirty works for me unless it doesn't work for somebody else.
Six thirty is a preferred time?
I'm late, but six thirty don't work for me.
And Mayor Cadre, that works for you as well?
Six thirty?
Yeah.
That's perfect.
Okay. Six thirty it is.
Which meeting are we talking about?
Our next school committee meeting?
March twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
March twenty-fourth.
Should we just set them for six thirty from now on, so we don't have to do that every meeting?
That works for me, if it works for everybody else. Either when you're on.
How long am I going to test for?
Why don't we plan on that? And then we'll, if we need to make a change, we'll make a change. But if that's okay with everyone? Okay. Six thirty from this point forward. All right, correspondence.
Yes, we have a letter from Joe Agron, who's the editor-in-chief and associate publisher of the American School and University Magazine, congratulating East Hampton High School on appearing in the November two thousand fourteen Architectural Portfolio Issue. And I don't know, Nancy, maybe you want to speak to that at all?
They apparently have received a plaque, and so, once we have that plaque, and we also have a plaque for the CHIPS points that we got for the high school, we'll find a nice place at the high school to put those plaques up. We're very proud, and they were one of a few listed in the magazine, and there's a lovely photo in the school committee packet that they also included in the article.
It's a nice magazine, and featuring all the, highlighting all schools that stand out across the country for architectural.
Excellence.
Excellence, yes. And, yeah, quite an honor.
Yeah, it is.
And the CHIPS program, just to clarify, that's an energy-saving program that we got points for, all sorts of energy-efficient and green things that we incorporated into our new building.
Congratulations to all on that. Moving along, we have some gifts.
Yes, a motion to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gift from Saint Philip's Episcopal Church for donating snacks to Center Peptin and Maple Schools.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. At this time, we invite anyone in the audience who might like to come and speak to us about any topic, to come to the podium and do so, and we ask that if you would tell us your name and where you're from, that would be great. So, is anyone interested in speaking to us at this time?
Could I, could I put somebody on the spot? So, we have the Maple School Principal here, Judy Avril, and we get your newsletter here, and you have in here this Hours of Code that Ms. Betts does. Could you really talk to, talk to us about that? I just find that fascinating, these first graders.
Judy?
I'm sorry. I just thought it was such a neat thing.
She really meant on the spot, literally on the spot.
I did.
So, I am Judy Avril, the Principal of Maple, and the Hour of Code was a nationwide movement. And Margaret Betts is our first-grade teacher, and so, she decided to try it with her first-grade class, and they did an hour of coding in the classroom, which is a computer-programming type thing.
It's amazing.
And it went extremely well. She was very, very pleased with the outcome. The children were very engaged, and they really were able to do it with a lot of success. So, it was a pretty great experience, and I think that's something that Margaret, she's also, Margaret teaches in our after-school program with Marcia Levy, and she has done some coding down there with the children, too. We just recently added computers to our library in the downstairs area, so we have twelve computers down there, so she's also been doing some coding down there.
So, they worked as teams?
They did.
I take it?
Yeah, they had two, two students watch a computer.
That's huge. That's just really incredible, when I read that, these first graders are coding.
And it's great to have teachers that are willing to give something like that a try, and just to, you know, kind of jump on, and she did, so it was great.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for asking.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the Finance Subcommittee Report.
Since our last full meeting, the Finance Subcommittee's met twice, on February seventeenth and March third. I don't think you have the minutes here, I don't know if I, we'll have to get them at the next meeting. But we've been looking over the two thousand twelve, two thousand sixteen budgets, and looking for trends and things we can do. We've been also still working on the special education shortage for this year of three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And so, that's going to change the way the budget looks for sixteen, because that money's going to come out of our choice funding, which we usually collect in one year and use towards the budget of the next year. So, we'll see a larger need for next year from that, but we're also applying for the state extraordinary relief program. So, all goes well, the state gives us that money back, and then the hole for next year won't be as big as it's going to look on paper straight away. And the timetable on that is the application setting, we're going to hear back next month. So, that's about everything. Our public hearing meeting got moved from tonight to March twenty-fourth, so I think that'll be our next full meeting and our next Finance Subcommittee meeting.
Very good. Any questions? Nice report, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Policy Subcommittee?
We have no report.
Okay. I spoke with Wendy on the phone prior to tonight's meeting, and she said that the CES has not met, Collaborative for Educational Services, has not met, so she did not have an updated report for this evening, since our last meeting, they have not met. And we do not apparently have a student activities update, because we're missing our student representative.
You told Brian, not in Attwater?
So, I didn't talk with him, and I don't have his update. Does anyone here have anything they want to say about anything that's transpired at the schools in the last week or two?
I know at the high school, they're working on Mr. East Hampton.
Right.
Every year I lobby for that. Have they ever selected me as a judge? No. No. Every year.
Well, now you're on television announcing.
There's a long wait list, is what I heard.
Keep trying. Don't lose hope. Okay, next, we have the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you.
I have one question. In the past, we've talked about having an alternate student rep, because the busy challenges of their schedule means that sometimes, for no fault of their own, you know, Brian's probably scheduled to be in three different spots tonight, but then it's always good to have a student here. So, it's just a reminder that, I imagine that would be something that we refer to the Policy Subcommittee for further consideration, but I think ultimately, the seat is chosen through the high school.
Well, I think that it's typically the president of Student Council, and that's Brian, and then when he's not here, it's supposed to be the vice president of Student Council that steps in, and that would be my daughter. But I know, I know that she didn't know that tonight, because otherwise, I certainly would have insisted that she be here, so I don't think she was aware of that. But there is a plan, I think it's president, then vice president steps in.
Maybe it was a last-minute thing, that he was ill or something?
Right, but I mean, I, you know.
Probably just a miscommunication.
Sure, I just think that there've been, this is not the first time.
Right.
So, whatever system, whatever system has been in place since I've served on the school committee, has probably been the same system. It seems, it's always great to have a student voiced. There was one year when there were two students, and they alternated, and I think that increased the percentage. I don't know whether that was because there were two presidents, or they just chose to do it. So, again, this is not.
I think they chose to share the.
They chose code.
Right, well, it, to the extent that we think it's valuable to have them here, it's too bad when they're not.
Right.
And it's because the system that we have in place didn't work. I suspect because people don't know, know that the system is in place.
So, I can check that with Dr. Perron, and make sure that that's in place for the rest of this year and for next year.
Very good. Okay, on to Superintendent Follinsby's report.
Thank you, Deb. I'd like to change the order of the report. I would like to first have the pleasure of announcing our Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teaching Awards. I've asked our award winners to come here this evening, so we can all congratulate them, and in a minute, I'm going to ask you to get up. We announced it on Friday. They were nominated by teachers and administrators in their respective buildings, and then we, as a leadership team, principals and I, and other administrators, talked over all the candidates and made the final choices. And so, I have joining us tonight, Elise Anderson from the high school, and Elise, why don't you come on up over there by the podium, and I'll join you in a minute. Actually, I guess I could join you now, and then I'll announce the others. And Elise is a science teacher at the high school, and Jennifer Ikorn from the middle school. And Jennifer is.
Math teacher.
Math, yes. I wasn't remembering if it was math or E.L.A., math teacher at the middle school. And then Joan Schaefer, she'd come up, she's a representative for all the elementary schools. Joan Schaefer is the math specialist and coach for all of our elementary schools. Joan has been doing this for a number of years, and it's not often that we have a teacher who travels between buildings be nominated, so we're delighted that Joan was nominated this year. And so, I'd like you all to just wish them a hearty congratulations for being honored by their peers and their administrators. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And they will be honored at a lovely dinner at Tavern on the Hill, I think it's April twenty-ninth, is that the date? And, and so, that'll be a gala event. There will be teachers and administrators from many districts there, and it's just a lovely affair, and we're just always so proud and pleased to be able to celebrate these wonderful teachers we have in our district. All right, so, next, I'm going to ask Gerard Benoit, excuse me, to come forward. He's a new French teacher at our high school, and Gerard has a, an exchange program that he wants to talk with you about this evening. He did this program in the school he was in before, and he brought it to Dr. Perron and my attention, and asked if we'd be interested in having it in our high school, and I thought it seemed wonderful. And so, I asked if he would come and give you a little presentation on this program this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, first of all, I want to thank the school committee for allowing me to come and present today. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my administration, my department lead, for their support. It is true, I'm coming to talk about an exchange program, one that I've been very much involved with in my past. It was a wonderful experience, and I want to present this opportunity to the people of East Hampton. First of all, I am not selling a trip anywhere, right? What I'm selling, rather, is an experience, right? I am, I'm selling the exchange program. So, if I can get this to go. Will it go? Nope. Here we go. All right.
Oh, here we go.
Right, so, I'm, I'm selling an exchange program. What does this mean? Well, it's an opportunity that we're going to offer our children to grow, right? Life-changing program, promoting cultural, not only cultural literacy, not only language acquisition, but interpersonal, intellectual, emotional growth. It's an opportunity to see what, you know, the world looks like outside of the United States, outside of East Hampton, even outside of home. It's an opportunity to make friends across the globe, and sometimes, friends not just between students, but between families, offering East Hampton the possibility of a friendship with another school in another community in France, and they're very eager to be joined with us, as it turns out. So, here we are. As she, as Mrs. Follinsby said, my name is Gerard Benoit, I teach French at the high school. I'm in my tenth year of teaching. I started doing an exchange program in two thousand seven, and we have the possibility to do an exchange with a school in a town called Château-Lain in Brittany. Château-Lain is in the Finistère department of Brittany. It's located on the Om, it's a small community, about, you know, five, between five and six thousand people. And if you don't know much about the geography of France, Brittany is in the northwest of the country. More specifically, if I can get my little mouse, will I do that? Can you see that? No, it won't go. Château-Lain is the name of the community. If you look at the B on Bretagne, and then you just go a little up to the left, it is that community there. The French exchange basically is where we receive students from France, and we send students to France in exchange. It starts off in the classroom, where we are writing letters, our students are writing letters to students in France. It begins as an epistolary relationship. Quickly, it'll move to like, you know, Facebook or something else, they become friends, and then one of the two communities will, will host first. Typically, what happens is we'll go to France first, and then they will, we will host them So, we're talking about a trip in April, where we would bring between twelve and thirteen students to France. We usually leave like the Wednesday before April vacation, where they're obviously through vacation, and we come back typically the, the Wednesday after vacation. What do we do during this time? We start off in, in Paris for a couple of days, just to kind of, you know, get our, you know, France sea legs. We do some sightseeing, all the things that you kind of need to check out while you're there, right? By Saturday, we're on trains to go across the country, where we meet finally our correspondents, or correspondants, as they call them, and then we begin the adventure. So, from Saturday until, not the Sunday after, but the Sunday after that, we are literally living a French existence in a host family. We are seeing their everyday life, we're included in all the things that they do, we're being taken around on, you know, whatever outings they may have planned. We're often there during Easter, as it turns out, and that's actually pretty interesting. We've never, ever had any experiences that were not less than absolutely just warm and happy and altogether accueillant, as they say. Our students would shadow French students when they go to school, because we're on vacation, they're not on vacation. So, our kids are going to school with these French students, they'll have field trips through the school, and it's really a wonderful thing for them to see what it is to be a student in France versus what it is to be a student in our country. Not so much that they'll think, oh, there are better places, but actually, traveling like that and experiencing how other people live, really makes us appreciate what we have a lot more. When they come to us, it is understood that we are going to be as warm and welcoming to them as they were to us. So, they come into our homes, they, they have relationships, you know, with our families. We take them to all of the things that we want to do and impress them with, or whatever. We have a birthday party or a wedding we're going to go to this weekend, you're going to come and be part of the family, and it's a really wonderful thing. So, our proposed sister school is called the Lycée Salui. Can I say it's a lycée, but it's also a collège as well? They have a middle school, and it's a high school. You know, it's a pretty typical school. It's a small school, they're also a boarding, it's a private school, and there's a boarding component as well. We don't typically get matched with people at the boarding school level, we're usually matched with families. I recently had an opportunity to travel with my principal at the time, who was invited by the principal of that school, Monsieur Kenodere, and he kept a blog included in the packets that I have for you today, and in a moment, I'm going to tell you just what's in there. But the very last page are some selections of things that he said in his blog. He blogged his stay while, while he was there. I thought that you'd find that interesting. But anyway, this is a picture he took, twelve-year-old students in the collège during an English class, and yes, they stood for me when I entered the room, which explains, if any of my students are watching, why, when somebody comes in the room, we stand, it's a, it's a thing of respect that you show people when they walk into a classroom. In any case, he had a wonderful time when he was there, looking at things as an administrator. So, I'm very proud to, to say that, you know, I've got, I've got his backing on this, and I would, I would hope that you would read some of the things that he has to say. When he came, we were a group of thirteen students. I try to keep it small, between ten and thirteen is kind of the limit. It's an intimate group. I usually travel with somebody. At this moment, I have an idea of a co-advisor, a co-chaperon, is it where? But I think at the moment, I'm going to, with your permission, travel with somebody, if it gets to that, that I've already traveled with, and I recommend. Historically, I've traveled with Madame Gilde de Sleeve, she's a retired French teacher. She ends up being more or less the maman in the group, whereas I'm sort of the papa, you know? And, you know, the two of us together have it work down to a system, and with twelve students, we know just how to get in and out of the metro, and to get where we need to be. It can be kind of harrowing sometimes. Traveling with, who, who do we do this with? There's an organization called I.S.E., Inter-Cultural Student Exchanges, and it's where language matters. I said I'm not selling you a trip, this is, this is a learning experience. People who sign up for this trip are actually signing on to, it's almost like a new course that they're, that they're taking. There are meetings that happen monthly, and as we get closer to the trip, it's actually weekly, and really immediately before the trip, it's a daily occurrence, where we are meeting and training and discussing and prepping. I.S.E. makes you sign documentation as a student, as, as a leader, to, to be faithful to your commitment to the language, and to embrace the culture, and to really give it your best shot. I think they have spies, actually, that, you know, look at you and find out the group you run planes, you know, to make sure that you're speaking French, you know, or whatever language. So, it's really about language. It's not so much going to see the Eiffel Tower. So, I.S.E., you know, why, why do we go through them? Why do I go through them? It's all about a family stay, it's a true immersion experience. Host families are not paid, they're volunteers. These are people who really are curious about other cultures, they really want to share their daily lives, their, their customs, their cultures. The cultural exchange is a whole family thing, it's not just for one person. As I mentioned before, it's an opportunity for families to, to unite, for schools to unite, for principals to unite, for mayors to unite. Every time we go there, the mayor has a reception for us, where, because they love receptions, we have to make a speech, and we get a plaque, and, you know, and it's really very wonderful, the entire community comes together to accept us when, when we go there. There's a, so, it's high-quality. The itineraries that are planned are geared to be where we're speaking with natives, it's not merely just going through museums, checking out the Eiffel Tower. We're interacting with guided tours, one-on-one, artisanal workshops, we, one time, we were making crepes, we were rolling crepes, which is really quite fun. I mentioned the school visits, where you're literally shadowing people all day long. They have really good customer service. What do I mean by that? Well, every country or destination is assigned a representative who's absolutely fluent in the language, and they are completely expert in the destination that, you know, we've chosen. Total teacher, family support from the beginning to the very end. They help us prepare, they've got a Wiki space set up for all kinds of materials to, to use in the classroom, before we go, while we're there, after, because, you know, once the exchange is over, there's like a withdrawal sort of that happens, and they even support us through that, a way to process, what, what just happened to me? What just happened while I was there? A way to, to put all that together and make a lot of sense of it. They give other sources, like the Source Workbook, where teachers are given, you know, lots of advice, you know, pointers on what to do in certain circumstances, and so on. Also, every winter, people, teachers who are traveling in that particular year, so if we're talking two thousand sixteen, in the winter, they bring everybody to the Twin Cities for a weekend conference, where it's really intense, like preparation for, all right, we're doing an exchange, it's completely done, in whatever foreign language you're doing. I mean, it's really, you know, top of the line. Financial support is available, there are, there's money that is given to families of low income. As I am new to this district, this is a new program to this district, I am very interested, as it turns out, in making this a program that is not just for the elite. It's actually an issue in France as well. I'm currently looking into grants, not just for the needy, but across the board, so that anybody that can do this would have the opportunity. Also, I.S.E. has scholarships for schools, for districts, where there's more than one language participating. So, if you have a district that has French and Spanish, for example, if you travel in the same year or alternate years, you're eligible to get, I think they say between seven and fourteen thousand dollars. So, they're really serious about making a financial contribution. So, that's basically that. I've given you, I've given you some handouts, I'm not obviously going to read them to you, but I want to explain to you what they are. The first sheet is an explanation of the program in general. Next, we have the application. Students have to apply. As I said, this is an educational program, it's not just some trip that you, you go on because you say you want to. We have a faculty recommendation form, where students have to go and get, you know, teachers to, you know, talk about them, and to say, you know, can you write me a little recommendation? But then I also will send out these recommendations to the entire faculty, and they secretly, whatever, tell me, you know, what the story is, and based on the recommendations I get, the official ones from the students, and these faculty recommendations, which they know about, it's not a total secret, we're able to see, hey, what's the story? On the back of the faculty recommendation is an example of a letter, part of the process, students have to write a letter stating what, why should they be considered for the exchange? Like, what are they going to bring to the exchange? And this is. And this is an example of one of those. I've underlined things that Madame and I highlighted as things that caught our attention. You'll see that things that we're looking for, not so much I was the best in my class, but really, they're really motivated, that they realize that they're in someone else's culture and that they're there to experience new things, that they're there to have a good time, in the sense that they're going to experience all that is to offer and not just close themselves in. The next page is a rubric for exchange applications, and then on the back of that is a rubric in how we assess a person's commitment to the foreign language. All these things are French-specific because that's what I do, but all of these things would exist for Spanish as well if this is something we decided to adopt. The next sheet is from ISE, where it has an itinerary listed, including the price. The price would be, at the most, three thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars, which covers virtually everything except for five hundred dollars, which would be sort of for restaurants and any other thing. So, like transportation, subways, or somebody loses something, all this money goes together in a big account, and this is how we pay for incidentals while we're there. I've included the vetting process comparison chart to answer any questions you may have. Also, there are frequently asked questions. ISE has a very strict code of conduct that we adhere to. I have a very strict code of conduct. I won't take anybody out of the country that I wouldn't trust with my children, with my open wallet, with the keys to my house, my car. And ISE backs up its teachers. And then lastly, the blog from Dr. Maruszek, who was with us in 2011. So, I'm sure I didn't say half the things I wanted to, and I'm sure I stayed my time twice as long as I ought to have. But I'd like to hear any questions you may have.
Very exciting.
Sorry? Can you go? Let's all go.
Thank you for this presentation. It's very, very exciting.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Yeah, it sounds like a wonderful opportunity for students.
Two things.
First of all, I might recommend, if you're going to investigate grants, to look into the ELF, East Hampton Learning Foundation.
Okay.
This may be something that they would choose to support financially. I was, I was thinking that five hundred dollar additional stipend, that might be something that they could cover five times twelve or thirteen, you know? Just a suggestion.
Excellent.
What was the other thing? Oh, what the timeline would be if this were to move forward about host families in East Hampton and if there is any aid that we could lend in publicizing it. I assume you have preference that it would be the families of high school students?
It would be the families of high school students. This time around, it would be slightly different than normal in that we would actually be hosting first. If we said, "This is a go, let's do this," we'd be hosting first, and actually in October, because then we would go to France in April. So, time is really of the essence as far as that. But again, the idea is an exchange, so, you know, ideally, I, as a French student, would correspond with you, and then I'd go and stay with you, and then you'd come and stay with me. So, ideally, it would be at the high school level.
I think it sounds awesome.
Thank you.
Your enthusiasm is admirable.
Well, thank you. You know, if it were just a matter of traveling, you know, a big field trip, you know, I may not be less, I might be less enthusiastic, but I've literally seen students change from, you know, leaving Boston to coming back again. I remember the first time I did it, there was a boy, very much a boy. He had long hair and looked like a child, and when he came home, his mother said to him, "My God, what happened to you?" Like, he came home and his hair was pulled back, and very soon he cut it off, and, you know, "He's a very serious musician today." It's like he grew up on that trip. And what does it have to do with French? The people coming on this trip are not people who are getting As in their French class. They're people who are serious, like, "Yes, I want to go and do this. I want to experience these things. I want to have this growth."
Wonderful experience.
Really is.
I do have a note that Dr. Perron asked me to read this evening. He wasn't able to be here, and he said, "I unequivocally support the French exchange program being proposed by Gerard Benoit. Benoit, the program focused on immersion and founded on academic learning goals is a great opportunity for EHS students. They will be able to connect with peers in northern France, immerse themselves in French culture, and explore education in a school in France. Additionally, they will welcome French students into their homes and afford those French students the same opportunity for immersion in East Hampton. Thank you for your support." And when I spoke with Dr. Perron this afternoon, he also mentioned that he thought that this was really a wonderful opportunity to grow our French program and to grow another program in our schools that would be appealing to our families and our students.
Can I ask one more thing? Assuming that everybody else agrees that this is a great idea, maybe those students could come back and give a little presentation to elementary students upon their return.
Absolutely, absolutely. And in the past, we've actually, not so much the elementary, though I love the idea because I think it's even better the younger you are, but at the middle school, it's one of the really big draws. Like, yes, we need to learn a foreign language, another culture, because, hey, this world gets smaller and smaller every year.
Motion to approve.
No, yeah, oh, I'm so sorry, Peter. I'm so sorry. Go.
I think it's terrific and endorse it. It's the execution that the questions come up. I assume from Dr. Perron's letter that questions came up in the back of my mind about the coverage of your classes while you're away.
Right.
And things like that are all squared away. I think I come back to the economic piece, particularly because this will do a great deal to enhance the academic performance of the students who go on this trip.
That's true.
And that the students who don't enjoy that opportunity will still be in the same classes with them.
Right.
And we're in a comparative business at some level educationally. And so, the execution, it seems to me, is really crucial. The fifty thousand dollar number that's cited by ISE is their global number.
Right.
That's not East Hampton.
It isn't.
So, the expenditure of forty thousand dollars, which is the total amount, it seems to me, this is much like other programs that we've talked about in the past, when we moved with the AP program. Everyone agrees in the merits of the AP program. We just wanted to be sure to the best that we could that when the grant money initially came along, went away, which it now has, that we would continue to ensure that students of all circumstance can take advantage of this. I think it's terrific, and I want to be sure to say it again and again, that there's nothing about the idea or the opportunity that I, I just want to be sure that a random, let's say twenty-five students want to do it next year, that it would be a random lottery choice of the twenty-five until you could grow the program, or you could take twenty-five with you, which would be terrific as well, and that it would not be selected through an economic process. And my fear is that our endorsement of something that has that with such a short timeframe, you mentioned a few moments ago, right, Dan, that we're looking at a budget hole next year. Our capacity to follow through for families that would love to have their kids do this and not be able to do it. I know that's life. Life's tough. That's how it goes. But that's one thing to say. It's another thing for us to endorse, that that's life and that's how it goes. So, I'm searching in my mind for ways that we can help. I think the suggestion about ELF is a terrific one. I wish you all the success in the world, and I know the kind of uphill battle you're going to face because international travel to study French right now doesn't, you know, it's not like the Common Core says, "Yes, that's what we want." It's all the more reason to support a program like this. It's all the more reason that I do. But my hesitation comes from, what do we do for the children desperately would love this and for whom it would be academically so helpful? And returning to some of the themes that I've mentioned before, students who want to improve their standing in terms of college admission. They love French, and they can't go because they don't have the money.
I think, Gerard, did you speak about, when you were talking to Dr. Perron and myself, about fundraising, that you did some of that?
Right, so fundraising is certainly an option. We've done that in the past, and it really depends on how much students are willing to put themselves out there. The only issue with fundraising is that often happens after a person's already decided to participate in the program, and I think Mr. Gunn is saying that if a student felt as if they couldn't afford it, they wouldn't even try to apply to the program.
That's the student I'm concerned about.
Wouldn't that be a shame?
Right.
And I hear that, and I certainly feel like that is a mistake. I know that my colleague in France is facing a similar battle, and the French have very much your attitude to the point where they don't want this program to happen if everybody can't go. My hope is that certainly, once we get this program off the ground, it'll become such an institution. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get us to adopt an institution, because as you point out, colleges see this. I've had many students say to me, "You know, it's because I went on this exchange." I hear all kinds of stories like that, and everybody should have that opportunity. I've just begun my search in grants, and I'm hoping as time goes by, we will have more and more to offer.
What was the history, since you've done this for a number of years, and I'm sure whatever communities you've done this in face similar challenges, how have your sort of worst fears been allayed? I mean, you seem to still enthusiastically embrace this, so I'm confident that there's a way. Can you speak to the practical historical examples of where kids who might otherwise have said, "Gosh, I can't do this," still ended up having this life-changing opportunity?
The district that I came from was a little different demographically, and it was a much larger school. We had two thousand kids in that school. I would get as many as thirty and forty applications. I only take twelve. Honestly, did I go through and have I had students say they wanted to apply but couldn't because they couldn't afford it? A student has never said that to me. However, there have been students that, or one in particular that comes to mind, where I felt that the student should participate, and he was hesitant, and I was able to convince him that this would be a really good thing for him. And it wasn't clear to me, if it was a question of money, that I suspected it, and his parents made it happen. We didn't have to go to that next level. So, it really was, it was a different situation.
Sure. Well, and I appreciate that, and I think, you know, I don't doubt that everybody here on the committee shares that concern, you know, that we've created, for example, in the last few years, something of an institution that we talked about at one of the previous meetings with the We the People program, which involves some financing, and there's been success around making that happen. It's a little bit less in terms of the total amount, but it's the same kind of thing. It offers an extraordinary opportunity to enrich an otherwise great education and just take it to the next level. And, you know, I love, whenever, when something like this comes along, my son just spent six days in Quebec, right? And I understand all of the virtues of which you speak, and we're fortunate that, you know, his family could provide that opportunity for him. And I just want to be alert to the need that we're, our function is to serve all the children in the community, and if we think a program is really worthwhile, to do whatever we can to make it possible for all the kids who are otherwise qualified. This is a great application process. That you keep. I just wouldn't want someone who would fly through this really well never to be seen because their family looks at too challenged. And there's also an issue of invading privacy, you know? Some families don't necessarily want to reveal the reasons why they might do it or not do it.
An added component that I really didn't mention, but I ought to have, hosting is just as much an experience as not. I may bring ten, twelve, thirteen students. There are many more French people who want to come to the United States than there are Americans that need to go to Bretagne. So, they'll bring as many people as we will allow them. There's lots of opportunities to host. And some of the, some of the best parts of when we host, that's really when the relationships get formed. The families really do get involved. I contemplated bringing a clip of one of the exchanges where everybody was crying. It was the most pathetic thing because, you know, we had this wonderful time, and many of those students actually didn't travel, but they were still involved in the exchange. So, there's also that as well.
On that piece, and I know that other people want to ask questions, I'll be quick, but I do think that while it's less likely to be a concern, I would hope that we would open the possibility that lots of families in the community could host, because for some families, not only is it financially challenging to send, but it might be tricky to host.
Sure.
And I bet you'd find lots of people in the community, even if they don't have a child directly involved in the program, who'd be willing to host the students to help facilitate the success of the program.
Excellent. Thank you, Benj.
Thank you.
Mayor Kajder?
Thank you. It sounds like you had, you know, you have numbers in mind, the thirteen, and so that would be, like you said, I think it's really, I'm happy that you pointed out that there are many students in France that want to come here also, and that's still the numbers that you would have in mind there. And you were looking more for the high school students so that it would, you know, I could see how the camaraderie and... But I also noticed that you have your eligibility and you have your evaluations here. So, do you have any idea of, you know, what you would be thinking, like, how many students would want to do this, you know, or would be eligible based on, you know, based on the evaluations and the criteria?
As we are just starting this program, as I am brand-new to this district, as I'm learning day by day what it means to teach French in East Hampton, I don't have a very clear idea of how many people would be like, "Yes, let's do this." I haven't been selling it. I wanted to speak with you first.
This is the beginning.
This is the very beginning. So, to a certain extent, I'm, you know, taking a leap of faith, like, "Okay, we're all going to do this, and we can, let's build it. We have to build from something." I have asked informally, my students know that I'm here today, they know that this is something that is kind of in the works, and I've asked them tentatively, "Hey, what do you think? Is it something you might be interested in?" And I did have twelve people note on a quiz one day, "Yeah, this is something of interest." So, but as you point out, does it hold up to my rubric and all the rigorous things? I haven't gone through that yet. Do I get permission from you? Do I get permission from ISE to travel with less than ten? I don't know. I haven't had to do it yet. Hopefully, I won't have to.
Yeah. Thank you.
How many times have you gone personally? I've gone three times, three times. And a thing I wanted to point out was that, so say, say we get this up and running, we would adopt like, you know, France one year, Spain another year, France one year, Spain another year. So, it's not just France, right? It can be any other Spanish-speaking country. Why France? I never mentioned this, and I should have. I already have a relationship with a colleague in France. They're already ready to go. In fact, they are as good as coming, as far as they're concerned. They want to be here because they have to, they have to start early if they're coming in October. So, we already have it kind of in the bag, whereas Spanish, we're literally starting from the very beginning.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Just to kind of piggyback off of what Peter said, I'd kind of gone there in my mind as well, but I think, and I think what you were kind of alluding to toward the end is something that you spoke to, the idea of jump-starting this, and it may not be perfect. There may be a handful of students who just can't work it out by April, but we're adopting an institution in the hopes that in the future, other students would be able to, building some groundwork, building a reputation for the program in the city so that we could increase funding and support, hopefully, moving forward.
Right.
If everyone's asked the questions they want to ask, what I'm going to suggest is that we thank Mr. Benoit, have him sit down, and then we can discuss it as a committee, if we want to discuss before voting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
I think we're very fortunate to have you as a member of our faculty, and we're really very, very, very fortunate to have you bring this program to us.
Thank you again.
Thanks.
I'm grateful to be here.
Okay, while our questions have been answered, do we have any other discussion that we'd like to take place on this topic?
I think it's an exciting program that we could offer to our East Hampton students.
I'm just curious what other folks think about making it affordable. Can we, if ISE gives, let's say, you know, half the money, would we be able, would we be willing and able to provide the other half so that a great kid could go? And would we, would it stand the test of saying that we should spend, say that we're spending five or ten thousand dollars to support the program, that that's the best possible use of that five to ten thousand dollars? Or is it just simply, "This is a neat thing to offer for the families that can afford it, and therefore, we should go ahead and do it?" I think, I think it's a great idea. There's no doubt in my mind that it's a great idea. I just, I'm stuck with that question.
I think likely it would be somewhere in between the two, quite honestly.
What does that mean?
We need to have, we need to take a leap of faith and move forward and see what we can make happen and, you know, do the best we can and see how things can unfold, and it can grow, and we can get donors and sponsors and create a program.
I agree. Like Mr. Benoit said, this is the beginning. We need to start at the beginning.
Right, right. I think... I think that there might be something to be said too for the, you know, I in high school couldn't have afforded to go on this, but we didn't even have the opportunity, but I was, you know, I was a hustler. So if you're, if you're looking for that objective, you know, setting the groundwork about, you know, self-fundraising or with a group of colleagues and students and, you know, laying the groundwork for, for students to attend in the future too, perhaps they'll start some annual event moving forward that the French and Spanish students will work in tandem. Yeah, I think, I think there's a gray area there. It's not just, you know, only the rich will go or, you know, I think, we have a nice big, we're gray, we're a gray city.
I was fortunate when I was in high school to participate in an exchange program very much like that, except it was only within the United States. We went to Colorado, but, I mean, some of the kids got jobs and we did a lot of work together to raise money together to be able to go. It was quite a bonding experience and a great experience and, but we, everybody kind of made it happen, you just made it happen.
And I agree with what Peter's saying and those were my questions initially when I spoke with Mr. Benoit and Dr. Perron. And, and we did talk about that and I think that, you know, that would be an important component of this program, should we choose to adopt it, is to determine how we could ensure that all students who wanted to go would be able to go regardless of the financial abilities of their families. Or at least, you know, we would have a certain segment of support for, for those kinds of...
So you're confident that we can do that and we could defend the use of that money as opposed to devoting the energy that it would take to fundraise that money, couldn't go anywhere else? I know I'm playing the role of devil's advocate here, but at the end, then we all vote yes and we can, I think, feel better about it rather than just saying, gosh, this is a great idea. We could have any number of great ideas presented to us that have a similar economic consequence and at some point, as the school committee, we have to say, okay, I mean, right, at our next meeting, we're going to talk about a budget and let's say for the sake of argument that we need to find ten thousand dollars to make it possible for all the students that we think should go, go. We're comfortable going to the public and saying, and here's a ten thousand dollar line item to support this program. I think we can make that argument, I just don't think we should make it without saying that we're going to. I think we can make it on educational grounds, but that we should be prepared to do that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really envisioning at this point, but I honestly haven't had enough time to really think about how this might play out, but I'm not envisioning it as a line item in our budget. I'm envisioning it in seeking funds through fundraising, through service organizations perhaps. Mr. Benoit is looking at grants, grant funding. Laura mentioned the ELF grants, that might be a possibility. So I'm thinking about it that way as opposed, like we do for a number of other, you know, activities that we have in our, in our, our school district. For instance, the SAD group just raised a good amount of money through the concert for a cause in order to enable them to do some of the things that they wanted to do that, that meant travel and expenses and so forth. So that's, that's kind of the way I'm envisioning it right now, but I think that, you know, it's going to take some, a number of conversations and, but I think that it is a component of the program that I strongly endorse. I agree with you.
It strikes me that if that ever came up, that would be a serious conversation to have and I don't know which way it would go, but I think we're far removed from that conversation. You know, that presentation wasn't asking for a dime, it was saying, let's try to make this happen. And I know that's not where you're coming from, you're saying, well, what if, you know, there's so many things that get done through the support of the community and the fundraising and we don't know if people are going to be in that situation, I'm sure they will be. But, you know, right now, with no question on the table of how many thousands do we need out of the line item and, you know, that's not a question to be answered right now. When it is, that's when I think that we'd really want to dive into that question because it would be a tough one to answer. But I, I would think we're, we're not quite at that bridge yet, you know, that it's going to be coming straight out of the line of a budget.
Well, I guess my question is, shouldn't we handle the tough question first? I mean, you know, to say, to say yes, I would like us to say yes and send this program off with the confidence that because we so believe in its educational value, which I do, that we would be willing to fund whatever the gap is, whether it's a dollar or more, that we're, we would endorse it in that way. Because this is, this is, this is a program that occurs within the school that will have an academic impact, right? I mean, it's going to affect the experience that students who are studying French have. It just, I'd like to vote yes with the understanding that we'll make it possible, sort of, what do they call it during the college admission? Knee-blind, that we would be saying that whatever the need is, whatever those kids are, who, through fundraising, the generosity, I mean, East Hampton's a generous community. I'd love to think that if there were thirteen kids, none of whom could afford it, that we...